Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. You see, everybody has checked in with the exception of Mr. Handler, who is absent. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag. In the United States of America, in the republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment. This time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council, first saying their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council. Second call, final call, anyone from the public? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number D, is our motion to approve the minutes of the August 11th, 2020 meeting. Motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Peschall. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries nine to zero. Item E, staff updates. Clean sweep presented by Steve Barge, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always good to be able to say something positive for the community at these meetings, and this is definitely one of those times. We have the Wood County authorities always asking for money for the clean sweep program. That's where they pick up hazardous materials that are very difficult to get rid of. I know I've had some in my garage, and maybe others of you have yours in your homes and garage, too, for these opportunities that come up. But there's one coming to Marshfield this year. We're lucky to have it in our community on Saturday, August 29th, this Saturday, from eight to noon at the Marshfield Ag Research Station, the South Campus at 2611 Yellowstone Drive. As always, they'll accept a variety of things, automotive, lawn and garden, different herbicides, insecticides, some household cleaners. There are certain things they will not accept. A couple of examples are antifreeze, latex paint, motor oil. But for the most part, there's so many things that they can take, it's a great opportunity to get rid of them in a safe and sanitary, environmentally friendly way. There are a couple of new safety requirements this time around that are different from the last time that they conducted a clean sweep up here. Residents will be asked to stay in their vehicles at all times, and materials should not be in the vehicle itself, the backseat or the front seat. They should be in the trunk or in a trailer. They'll be unloading them for safety reasons. And there's some other guidelines, but there's more information you can get. You can certainly call the Extension County Services at 715-421-8440, or the Wood County Health Department at 715-421-8911. They may point you to this flyer. I think we probably have a few copies here at City Hall, just so you're familiar with the guidelines before you go out there on Saturday. But we'd love to see as many residents as possible take advantage of this program when it's here in town. We'd like to collect as much of these materials as we can to have them safely disposed of. So again, this Saturday, the 29th, from eight to noon at the Ag Research Station on 2611 Yellowstone Drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two, Aquatic Center project update by Justin Kasperson, Parks and Recreation Director.
So what I'm going to try to do is each month stop by and give an update to the council on the progress of the pool and the pool project itself. The entire site is fenced, as you may see with the proper DNR storm water management devices in place. Demolition is well underway. The bath house and pump house has been removed. The pool vessel is to be removed this week. We did find an asbestos pipe underneath the what we call the gutter system, which is causing some challenges. What we have doing and companies and the DNR involved on the removal process, which is causing a little bit of delay, but nothing of significance. They'll have it out this week. Site grading has started. Shop drawings, submittals are moving along quite quickly and ahead of schedule. Fundraising is at 3.28 million. Our goal was 3 million, but we kind of upped it up to 3.5 to make sure we include all the ad alternates that we'd like to include in them. Bozen does have a live feed. If you ever get a chance, it's on their website under construction and then live feed. It does have the site on their live feed. I think it takes a picture every 10 to 15 minutes, so you can see the progress each day if you want to visit there. And I did give you some pictures to kind of show you the progress of the project. Since I am here, I will entertain any quick questions. I know it's not really a give and take, but...
Any questions for Justin? Nope, doesn't look like it. Thank you, Justin. Item F, Mayor's comments. Employee recognition to Brian Barnes for the Fire Department, August 28th, 2020 years. Amy Beauchamp, Parks and Rec, August 28th, 2020 years. Kelly Exer, Escher, Fire Department, September 5th, 1995, 25 years. Lucas Frymend, Fire Department, September 7th, 2010, 10 years. I also wanted to get a brief COVID update. I'm not going to do the entire state, but I think there are some very interesting things going on here, just in our area. In the north central region, there's a total of 12 counties. Of four of them are Wood, Portage, Marathon, and Clark. And in all 12 counties, there's a total of 17 people that are in the hospital, and of that, eight folks are in the ICU. Just in Wood County, there's been a total of 11,125 tests. A total of 421 of those were positive, and of the 421, 378 have recovered and currently still active with the virus, is a total of 41, and that is down substantially over a couple of weeks ago. Just here in the city of Marshfield, there's a total of 56 cases. At one point, right now, there's between one and five that are currently active. And in the larger school district of Marshfield area, there's a total of 85 total cases, and again, a total of one to five that are active. And today, in Wood County, there was only two new cases that went in, so that's very encouraging news. With that, that's all for me. Item G, council comments. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item H, reports from commissions, boards, or committees. Right. The consent agenda is our motion to approve and place in file recommending all actions in the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Fire, a second by Mrs. Sparrows, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. I'd like to ask to remove item P2 from the agenda for discussion.
All right, anything further? No, so that will be removed? Then with that, please go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. Let's see. Item J, action on items removed from the consent agenda on resolution number 2020-47, conditional permit for 2000 South Central Avenue. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I watched the video of that Plan Commission meeting, and I was a little bit upset about what I was hearing. And Mr. Penker, member of the Plan Commission, made some points about the analysis of the conditional use permit and some of the things that were put on there. I would like, can I ask Josh a question? Josh Miller?
Absolutely.
Josh, can I ask a question? When I watched the video, did I hear you correctly in saying that some of the, when it got into the analysis of the request for the conditional use, that the utility had provided you with some of those things, like the, like how they met the goals in the comprehensive plan? Was that correct?
Yes.
Well, and that's what bothers me a little bit. That's sort of like letting the, that's sort of like letting the applicant do his own analysis, but that happened. The other thing that upsets me about it is what they put down there, Mr. Penker had made a point that some of it didn't even pertain to what was in the comprehensive plan. And to be sure, I went back and checked it myself, and he was right. And can you explain to me why you let that pass? Why you let those things that were not even pertinent to the comprehensive plan be read into the record?
No, I think that's a fair point, and that one did get by me as far as Goal 6.5 that wasn't pertinent to, was pertaining to nonprofits, basically. And that was, the goal pertains, but the objectives and the policies did not. So I, yeah, I certainly did not pick up on that one, and that certainly falls on my shoulders because I did the analysis and the review of it.
And I think it was, I think it was even more than that, in the sense that they, when they talked about providing the, in six point, six dash one, we were talking about providing services to the community. They weren't talking about, they weren't talking about utility services, except I think they did talk about extending water mains in terms of increasing the city's water service area and things like that, but there was no mention of the utility, the electric utility near, nothing. Anyway, the point, I'm perhaps beating a dead horse, but I do that quite well, as you probably understand. But the, the point is, Josh, just off the top of your head, on that, on that Planning Commission report that the county gives to the council every year, how many, how many conditional use permits were denied by the Plan Commission in 2019? 2019?
I don't believe any word.
That's pretty much what I figured, because it's been that way just about every year. I think our planning commission needs to take more critical review of things, and I wish we'd do that in the future. And with that, I thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So then, is there a motion then to approve resolution number 2020-47? Motion by Mr. Peschall, a second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries eight to one. Item K, presentation of value of the utility, Marshfield Utilities, presented by representatives from Marshfield Utilities.
Thank you. My name's Nick Cum, General Manager with Marshfield Utilities. You've seen me all many times, so I'm sure I don't need to necessarily introduce myself. But normally in April each year, Marshfield Utilities comes in front of this board to complete the value of the utility presentation. Like many things, COVID-19 pushed it back to tonight this year. This year, the presentation will focus on the customer stakeholder group. Instead of a presentation where I bore you with speaking about slides, we actually developed a video this year to highlight the value that we provide to the customers. So I'm going to switch the computer here. I am Nicholas Cum, the General Manager at Marshfield Utilities. Our mission is to be a forward-looking, stakeholder-focused organization, providing reliable and safe services to our customers while providing value and enhancing quality of life in the community. We take this mission serious and want to share a bit more about the value the utility provides to our customers.
Marshfield Utilities is a local company that provides local support, no matter the request. From a new service to updating existing facilities or billing inquiries, our staff are available. Marshfield Utilities staff even meet customers in the field for face-to-face meetings. In 2019, over 33,000 payments were made by customers at our main office. That is an average of 134 per day. Approximately 10% of the energy sold to customers by Marshfield Utilities is produced from renewable sources. Marshfield Utilities has secured $550,000 from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to support a proactive approach to customer-led service replacement, which will help customers save money and have safer water. Over the last three years, there have been 92 private side lead services removed totaling $270,207 in grant reimbursements. Of those, 76 required Marshfield Utilities to replace the lead on the utility portion. Marshfield Utilities has spent $480,367 on replacing those portions. Additionally, at least 65 lead services have been replaced during projects, main breaks, and service leaks. and service leaks. From 2011 through 2019, Marshfield Utilities customers have contributed $957,000 through their electric bill to support Focus on Energy programs. In turn, Marshfield Utilities customers have received approximately $2.7 million through Focus on Energy programs. Additionally, thousands of customers have benefited from residential energy and water audits or commercial assessments. Marshfield Utilities continually provides a lower frequency of outages to customers than that of other local electric utilities. This chart shows a comparison that indicates the average number of outages a customer will experience in a year based on 2018.
My name is Mikey Burl, and I'm a Commissioner with Marshfield Utilities. I'm also a local business owner in Marshfield. Reliable power is important, both at home and also in my business. We're dependent on power and on internet services together. So anytime we have an outage in either electricity or internet, my business, as I'm sure many of yours, is just dead in the water, waiting for it to come back on. I have a unique perspective, having owned businesses in other cities in Wisconsin, and Marshfield's power was always the least expensive one we had. Marshfield is lucky to have a municipal electric utility as opposed to an investor-owned, which serves most of the state. What we get out of having a municipal electric utility are lower rates, better reliability, and management closer to our community and in line with our community's values. The residual benefits of employees of the utility who spend their salaries locally, that's all great for the local economy, but as a consumer, lower rates, better reliability, and local management mean something to me.
Marshfield Utilities is recognized nationally for reliability and response times, day or night, weekday or weekend. The overall length of outages for Marshfield Utilities customers are lower when compared to other local electric utilities. American Public Power Association has recognized Marshfield Utilities for achieving exceptional electric reliability in 2019. Marshfield Utilities is also proud to have received the Reliable Public Power Provider, or RP3 designation from APPA. The designation means that Marshfield Utilities follows best practices in reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. We are all highly reliant on electricity to support our needs, both at home and at work. Each outage or interruption has a cost due to the lost productivity. When compared to the Wisconsin State average, as estimated by a reliability calculator, Marshfield Utilities customers saved about $3.5 million in 2016, $1.4 million in 2017, and $2.65 million in 2018 in interruption costs. What measures does Marshfield Utilities take to help with system reliability? Aggressive rebuilding, tree trimming efforts, and proactive system maintenance.
Hello, my name is John Schneider, and I live here in Marshfield with my wife Lori since 2008, and we moved from Greenwood, Wisconsin. I've been a Commissioner for the last two years. We have a cabin just south here in the Wisconsin Rapids area, and there we belong to a cooperative. Here in Marshfield, we pay about 7.8 cents per kilowatt, and there at our cabin, we pay around 18.1 cents per kilowatt. So there's a big difference there. Then also, at the cabin, we pay just to have the electricity, the meter at the cabin, we pay over $32 a month, whereas here in Marshfield, just to have the meter, we pay $12. So there's a financial benefit for us between the two locations.
Marshfield Utilities customers benefit from lower rates. This chart shows a comparison. For current Marshfield Utilities rates, an average household would pay $709 annually in comparison to $1,054 annually with an investor-owned utility. This is a 33% savings annually, which means our customers in total pay $3,988,890 less. Marshfield Utilities, your locally-owned, customer-focused utility.
So as you can see, we obviously provide a great value to the customers here in the local area. I think two numbers that really stuck out to me as I viewed that presentation is, first of all, with outages and the savings to our customers. I realize they're all 2018 numbers, and you might ask, well, that's obviously a while ago. Unfortunately, the national statistics that we can get from all the utilities doesn't come out until later this year for 2019, so unfortunately, that's the best information that we have at this time. But obviously, we save customers quite a bit by having shorter outages. And then the other aspect that you saw on the last one is the $4 million of savings to the customers on an annual basis from a residential perspective. I mean, I think any one of us could drive 10 miles outside the state limits or have friends or neighbors or, you know, people that we know, and they're paying considerably more for the same electricity that you're using here in the city. So I think those are some great values. I want to take a moment just to recognize our Commissioners. Today, we have Harry Borgman is here, Mike Ebro, Nate Mueller, and John Schneider, and then Paul Capello is the fifth one, unable to make it. So I guess I welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I've been on the council for 21 years, and I've said this the last couple of years, and people that know me, I tell it like it is. I think we've got a great staff and great Commissioners, and I think they all do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Further questions?
The last thing I'll just show quickly is the big check. I know it's always a fun thing, and normally we'd obviously get pictures, but tonight, given the COVID, we'll just, I'll show it. So this year, between the dividend and the pilot, you can see a little over, what, $2.1 million that was provided. Fortunately, this isn't the real check. The real check was delivered in April, is when it was required, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item L, request, discussion regarding council member information on the city website and other city publications presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, it brought to my attention a question about whether or not the city needs to have the addresses of the members of the council and the mayor, for that matter, the elected officials, on its website and potentially on other publications, newsletters, whatever. We do that in the city of Marshfield. Talked to the city attorney. He checked also with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Legal Council, and it appears that that's not requirement. The city attorney actually suggested that it's more of a policy issue that this body can determine whether or not that's something that you want to have or not. It's been historically provided to our citizens as an informational item. Like I said, on website, newsletters, all type of publication, so they can see information about their elected officials, but like I said, it's not something we're obligated to put out there. I did do some checking with other communities, and it's really mixed. I did a random survey of 10 cities and villages around us. Six of them do have the addresses of the elected officials on the websites, four of them don't. In our area most closely, Wausau, Plover, and Weston do. Stevens Point and Wisconsin Rapids do not. They just have the email address, which is typically a city email address to reach those individuals, and a phone number, which I'm not sure if it's a home phone number or some other number, but some other way that they can contact their elected officials. And I believe it's very possible that in some cases, they don't even have that. They maybe just have an email or some way through the city itself to connect with the officials. So I put on the agenda tonight, discretion of the council, it truly is. This is one of those, there is no right or wrong answer. Like I said, historically, we've had this information out there for the public, but we're not obligated to do so, and I give it to the bodies to discuss.
Thank you. Mr. Whitzel with a motion.
Thank you. First, quick comment. I'm assuming that if addresses were not published, but somebody wanted to send a letter, they could send it to City Hall with our name, and it would end up in our mailbox, so we would still receive any letters that somebody wanted to send. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I would move to remove... There's a motion by Mr. Whitzel, and a second by Mrs. Sparrows. Any discussion? Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, thank you. What are we going to remove? The address and the phone numbers, or just the address?
I would just say the address. Phone number, email is plenty fine. That's how most people contact people nowadays, so that's fine. I don't know that the address is necessary.
I agree, I totally agree, but it wasn't clear if the phone numbers were going to be deleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
The, I'm going to vote against this motion, only because in my experience, your friendly local neighborhood alderman is important, and they need to know that you share their concerns too. I have people pull up to my house and knock on the door, and we sit and talk about issues that go on here, and we talk about, we talk about why their ditch is overflowing, which is the most common one. I do believe that they need to know that you're part of the community too, and that there is a risk. I understand that there is a risk in doing that. You could end up with people picketing in front of your house, which is something we actually should avoid. But the point is that they need to know, they need to know that we're one of them, that we are representing them, and I feel that removing the address from the directory would be a bad thing.
Thank you. Anything further? Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't say this in my initial comments, but I did run by the city as well, city attorney as well, whether or not the citizens calling or emailing City Hall and asking point-blank for the addresses of their elected officials would produce that, and the answer is that it does. We are obligated to provide that information upon a direct request from a member of the public. This is only whether or not it would appear on, again, website, newsletters, and other city publications that we put out.
Please.
So I just want to add to that. So the way this falls is that the, we do have telephone numbers. Telephone numbers are actually a unique setting, so that if any individual member of the council doesn't want their telephone number displayed, they can restrict that, meaning their personal telephone number. So that's one that you absolutely have control over. As to addresses, again, we're really talking right now, tonight, in the motion, as I understand it, really only involves what the policy is in terms of displaying it on the website, but it is accurate that if there was an open records request or a request, and when we say open records, it doesn't mean that it has to be a formal written one, but if somebody called and asked for an address for an older man or woman, then there would be an obligation to disclose that, and it really has to do with the statutory requirements that for you to be in office, you have a residency requirement, so the address becomes relevant to the public. But your personal telephone number, there's a statute that protects against that. So unless an individual authorizes the city to release the telephone number, then that's unique. And that's the same thing too in regard to personal emails. We have obviously city emails for each of you, and that may expose it, but that's just a general discussion of the way the law treats this.
And I would assume part of the premise, I'm sorry, part of the premise is that we're not even obligated to have a website or to do a city newsletter, so whatever we put on that, we do have the ability to restrict.
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, seeing nothing further, please vote. That motion carries five to four. Thank you. Let's see here. Item M, request to approve the appointment of Aaron Howard, 402 West Park Street, to fill a position on the Historic Preservation Committee that was vacated by Allison Hawks. Appointment expires 2022. Look for a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Fisher, a second by Mr. Whitzel, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. And item number N, any suggested items for future agendas? Any suggestion items for future agendas? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Whitzel, second by Mr. Bargender. There we go, do a nice vote. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.